You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the February 13th meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
Started, okay. Okay, 7:05, I will call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's get in here, okay? Whenever you're ready, Joan, you do the roll. Okay? Please. Donna Dumbriz.
Here, present.
Samantha Arnold. Here. Ralph Fox.
Present.
Sam Paxton.
Present.
Rich Young. Just mark him absent since somebody heard. I'm here. Donna, are we in space? I'm not going to be.
He won't let me hear you, feeling very ill.
I can't speak. Give my report to. Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Present.
Police Chief.
Recording in progress.
Present.
Park Board President Gene Paxton.
She said she was going to be... Oh, Brad is on.
She's on. She's connected.
Yes, so is Brad.
Oh, Brad is on.
Yes, he is.
Oh, okay. I thought I'm doing that too. I thought I'd give my report and then I might.
Can you guys hear?
Go ahead and read. BZI President Matt Bowen. He's absent. And Building Commissioner, Code Enforcement, Jeff Chubb. Here.
Ray is absent.
Ray is absent. Land Commission President Ralph Fox.
And that is incorrect because it is Isaac Sekel.
It's what?
Isaac Sekel is now the President of the Advisory Plant Commission. That's my mistake, I did not include it on the agenda.
Sorry, his last name?
Z E C K E L.
Okay. Website Samantha Arnold.
Present.
Am I here? Yeah, you're here. I was checking the sound, sorry.
And some you keep missing Bob Sokowski, Road Commissioner. I know he's here.
Oh my gosh, and some of my... Bob, I'm so sorry, I know I got you on everything.
I'm usually last, so I just don't.
You are last on my... Mine was last on here.
You got season, we got...
Not least.
And we shouldn't have put over here Gary on this list too.
Gary's on.
Oh, he is on the list, there we go.
He's on.
I don't know, you know what, I think I use the old templates once in a while and then, you know, forget that.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Sorry. All right, now, for number three, I had listed election of officers, but we have only three of us here now. So if Rich comes in, even if he's late, and maybe we do it that it's your choice, what do you want? We to divide up?
I said we move it.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, well then Joan needs to run our elections for us.
What are you going to do?
I said move it.
You're going to do it with the three.
Move it to next month or do it now?
Move it to next month.
Move it next month, okay, so we're going to table our election of officers until next month. Tabled, okay, thank you. All right, now the meeting agenda, I did not change anything from what I had sent out to you except that one reminder about liaison appointment for fire and police because Michael Martinez used to do that, so we need to appoint a new one, so that is going under eight, we're going to put that eight B. And then, under the meetings that are coming up, I wrote downtown council February 12th, it should be March 12th. So thanks to Gene who sent me a correction on that, okay? So those are the only changes that I have made. Are there any additions or corrections, council members, to the agenda? Pardon?
No.
Okay.
The unfinished business under IOT.
Yes.
It should be IOT, email, and domain change.
Okay, very good. All right, so please change under 10A, make the correction, it is IOT, email, and domain change. Okay, thank you Samantha. If there are no other changes, then I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Agenda.
Agenda. Acheza for February 13th, 2024.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Sam Paxton, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes. Okay, two absences. Okay, we move on to minutes. Joan sent us all the minutes the other day for the January 9th meeting. Have you had a chance to review these minutes?
No.
You know what, they were attached to an email.
I do something, I did something, I get a lot of emails from tagging on to something.
You tagged it on to one of the other emails.
Yeah, because the email that said it had.
Where it was agenda, yeah, so neither of you saw that yet?
No.
All right, well then what can be done is, okay, it was an email that had the agenda for me and Joan had responded and she had tagged on hers. I'm not quite sure what time that was, but if you care to look through them here, or we table the minutes until next month.
I can.
Okay, all right, Sam, you have a copy here.
This is January 9th.
I have it under. I now found June.
You found January 9th, okay, all right.
For appointments to boards and commissions, it says BZI President Dumbriz, are you the President of the BZI?
No, I am not the President of the BZI. I'm the board of appointments to boards.
Page two.
Oh, no, it's just that President Dumbriz, because I'm the President of the Town Council, stated Isaac Sekel stated he'd stay on for another four years.
Okay, I will say that's fine.
Gotcha, okay.
For setting priorities and goals for 2024 on page three of four, you could not understand the recording, I suggested, now I can't remember the term, but, oh, look into becoming a dark city, a dark town.
What? Setting priorities, you said what?
Beverly Shores there, or Beverly Shores, they're a dark town, like an international dark town, dark cities.
Something like Beverly Shores, which is dark cities?
Yeah, dark cities and dark towns.
They have controls over lighting.
It sets rules for lighting, to have light pollution and things like that.
Dark towns. Well, I could do it again.
Well, there are several homes, there was one especially, it looks like you're, you know, on an island at a resort, you know, when you go by, so they have so many lights, you know, and it, I mean, it lights up half a block in each direction, everybody. I don't know how the people around them are, you know, looking, they have pores.
That's all the heck of a night.
Okay, all right.
I move to approve the minutes from January 9th.
Okay.
As corrected.
Okay, thank you, and I need a second, I second that. Samantha Arnold, seconds, the minutes have been, Sam Paxton to approve the minutes as corrected, Samantha Arnold seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, three ayes. The minutes have been approved. Joan, we don't have anything for June, January 24th?
No.
No?
We have anything for January 24th.
Okay, all right. Okay, then we will table that, because that basically means according to what we have heard from Mr. Gunning in the past, is that we need a memorandum that, you know, to place without going outside of the bounds and, you know, whatever, so.
We do a little of that, I just didn't do it.
Yeah, okay, fine, so we don't need a lot of reform on that, okay, thank you. So we are going to do that, that will be tabled to next month. Okay, thank you. Let's see, let us move on to reports from committees, officers, Joan, take it away, please.
Maybe they should let it change. I have no which. Vouchers, I shouldn't name vouchers, but I'm going to start with the initial associations, not additional vouchers.
I'm looking at the council payroll register.
Correct.
There. I don't have the additional minutes.
That was January 31st. Indiana League of Municipal Clerks and Treasures, $82, that's a membership for dues. Indiana ADA Coordinators, $25, another dues. Wax Bank Shell for gasoline, $121.46. For one truck, diesel and for the gasoline was $117.98. Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, that's for services in conjunction with the 2024 budget. And what was happening in January, it's 2024, $675.25. AT&amp;T Mobility, $90.38. And that includes internet, Chase Card Services, this is for...
And what services?
Chase Card, I have credit card. And the credit card was.
She uses that.
It was very infrequently, but we use it for Adobe and our Microsoft. And Adobe was $21.39, Microsoft $25. Also for postage, when I have to send out BZI certified mail, or any type of certified mail. In this case, it was for the BZI mail, $132.34. Fragman for... SEDAT, legal for Grobelney, drafts, correspondence, miscellaneous, home calls, and you name it, we couldn't put it all on here, $4,636.25. Jim McKay, he had come in and helped set up a new email, setting up email to have the accounting, anything with accounting separate, and then we discussed some other IT concerns, $175.25.
So what was that for? Because I saw nothing for Jim McKay, I was going to ask you what that was for.
What?
What's Jim McKay for?
He came in because we set up a new email to have just accounting on one email, instead of having it mixed up with all the other stuff, thousands that I get in a year's time. And also, we had some IT concerns, and nothing's been solved, we just did a lot of discussion.
What kind of IT?
$175.25.
Yeah, I saw that was for you had to uncover, you had deleted files that you had to recover from a USB drive?
That's on another one.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with this one.
Okay.
Global Engineering, they did videos, driving assessments, and they reviewed the asset inventory and pays your update for next year, $6,792.50. Global Engineering, that was for construction inspection, when the payment was in progress, $6,500. And that's underneath the community crossing grants. NIPSCO for streetlights, $20.76. Garage Electric, $104.29. And garage heat, $113.48, for a grand total of $19,833.33.
Joan, can I ask if you have, or can you obtain and ironize the total legal expenses that we paid related to the Grobelney legal proceedings? Doesn't need to be right now.
It may be right now, if you've got a minute for me to check.
But let's get it after the meeting, because you're, are you planning to discuss it now?
No, I just like to know what's at the running rate.
It's right around $20,000. I already have that figure for it.
Can you follow up with this?
No.
Please.
Okay, let's get back to the additional vouchers, unless you have something else on the addition.
Okay, any other questions on these vouchers right now? Okay, then I need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the vouchers.
I second that motion.
Sam Paxton, move to approve the additional vouchers for January, Samantha Arnold, seconded. Pardon?
Ending January 31st.
Ending January 31st, thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The three ayes there. Okay.
Well, we'll go ahead and read the next one.
Please, bud.
This is for the December payroll taxes that we pay in January, and that came to a grand total of $3,086.10. It includes the FICA for the employer and employee, federal taxes withheld, and also for Medicare for employers and employees, state tax withheld, and local taxes withheld.
Okay, thank you. Okay? Pretty clear, any questions on that?
Please sign your ballot.
Yes, I deserve for records.
Right, I have to.
So if there are no questions on the payroll taxes, I need a motion to approve.
I approve, motion that we approve the payroll taxes.
Okay. Sam, can you second it?
I second, I'm sorry.
All right, okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the payroll taxes as presented, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay.
While you're doing that, I will read the January 31st payroll. January 31st payroll includes FICA, Medicare, personal phone, and code enforcement, and the net entry, $3,007.29. The net entry transfers it over to the bank so we can pay it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the payroll vouchers for December, ending December 30th?
No, this is January 31st.
January 31st.
January 31st.
Okay. I need a second, a second, okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve vouchers for payroll taxes, January 31st, 2024.
Payroll. That is for the payroll.
Oh, payroll. Oh, payroll, I'm sorry, for payroll. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, three ayes. It has been approved, okay.
Okay, and the next one I have is the January 31st payroll tax, and that includes taxes that goes to our federal government, state government.
Okay.
That includes both employer FICA and withheld, also for federal taxes for each employee in FICA, FICA Medicare, state tax, and also accounting tax.
Okay.
For a grand total of $399.85.
Okay, it does say January 31st, 2023, up top?
Oh, gosh, yeah, let's make it 24.
Okay, all right. Any, any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the payroll tax vouchers dated January 31st, 2024.
Okay. I second that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the payroll vouchers for January 31st, 2024 payroll taxes, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, three ayes, it's been passed, thank you. My god.
And then I have to get the right one.
Okay.
Do you see my vouchers?
I'm looking at this and thinking to myself, wait a minute, I put it in the cassette, but that's the way the copies came out.
What, are you done?
No, I said, I'm looking at this, wait a minute, I put it in the cassette, mine, my friend.
Well, I already have.
Yeah, that's okay, that's fine.
They're so expensive that I did, plus I didn't take the time to run out and do it.
No.
I usually do, even do my other carries, and I don't charge, transfer taking, I don't charge transportation, and so then here. No, I don't know what I did.
Do you need a sheet?
No, I think I got, I don't have the, I have to someone to read the sign. I can go ahead and read it.
So we'll do this, and then we can, you know.
Then I'll go and do something else.
Yes, okay, yes.
Oh, I do, I have one here. Okay. For the February 13 vouchers, Town of Long Beach, $5,691. That is for police protection. Michiana Shores Volunteer for our department, $105 for our rental of the building. Republic Services Refuge, as for the garbage collection, $4,659.72. Department of Water Works for Kincaid Park, $9.36. Comcast for telephone, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, rather, that's for internet, $174.30. And Brenda Heck, travel to back and forth to the post office and the bank, $60.30. Report County here on August, published the BZI petition for 3852 Burchwood, $157.72. And for the BZI petition for 210 Sunset, $143.60. Bradley and Damske, $625, that's the monthly re-trainer. Fragman Associates, legal with Grobelney, miscellaneous documentation and review, drafts, Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department, $3,755.17. Jim McKay, has to recover some, they weren't und deleted files, but somehow another, they got lost in the system, and he had to bring it back out for me.
Gotcha.
They were on a USB, so $75. Department of Water Works for garage, water in the garage, $9.36. American AED, this is for the defense of the fire department, one of them is which right behind me on the wall, believe they, you had five, right?
Yeah.
You had five of them. $13,475.52 for a grand total of $31,228.
One question, there's Comcast internet, on the previous month we had the AT&amp;T internet, what's the difference?
The purpose is having two of them, I discussed that with our IT, and if one is down, in case of an emergency, we've got the other one.
Oh, backup, gotcha.
We've got a backup. And sometimes.
Other question.
They don't send us a bill every month, or they miss sending us a bill, then I end up paying two the same month.
About the LaPorte County payroll dispatch fees that the BZI, are they required to publish in the paper?
They're required. I asked that anyone who puts the notices out on the bulletin boards, just send me a copy of it, mark that you've been there, you've done it, take a picture, whatever you have to. I've not been getting it, so to protect the town, I have advertised.
Okay.
Because if it's not advertised, it's not so right when I do approve it.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but did somebody get a notification and the paperwork in order to post them in the boxes?
No.
I have to go through my records, I have so much.
Because, yeah, Ralph is very responsive if he gets whatever, and are you a Ralph? Who does it, you do it?
Yeah.
Not the most popular?
Right, okay, because that was the purpose of putting those in.
I know, I got to put on them.
All right.
On website, I remember doing that.
All right, now, did.
I might not have to.
Okay, do we, in other words, does, I'm just assuming, I don't know, does the BZI provide you with the information, or are you the one who puts together these notices, Joan?
I usually end up, I've been doing the notices for some time, due to the fact that nobody else does them.
Does the BZI?
Yes, they do, and I thought that that was the reason why the secretary was going to be doing it, to alleviate work for you. Okay, well, that would be something that's possible to discuss, to take some work off of your shoulders. I think it would make a lot of sense. Okay, so anyway, now we need to make sure that we, that news gets out.
One other question is, what kind of water usage are we getting in Kincaid Park during the winter?
That's, you know.
Is it just the milk?
Yes, it's one of those, yeah. Okay, that's it. All right, any other questions on that, and any other vouchers here? If you, you know, anybody needed an explanation, the defibrillators were purchased for the fire department through our ARPA funds and grants, and it was a decision that was made last year sometime, I think, if not the year before, so.
It was.
In order to do that.
I've been waiting for a resolution for an ordinance which has to be done for me to take it out of the AARP fund.
Yes, and I had a discussion, we were writing back and forth with the attorney with Brad, and Brad, I shared some information, that's why I sent out some of those other resolutions and ordinances, so you'd have them for your records, and this is what we'll be working on now, to put something together, you know, so, anyway, so, we, we'll have that for you, you know, by the next meeting, in order to do that, okay? Let us.
Can you approve it tonight, the people have been waiting for it.
Oh, absolutely, this will be approved now, just writing the document, we'll have that for next week, okay? All right, well, this is the first time it has approved, has appeared on our vouchers, Joan, so.
I've been in it, comedy times.
Yeah, it is.
I put it on here because I was waiting for the resolution.
Oh, all right, okay, thank you Joan, all right.
I make the motion to approve the February 13th, 2024 vouchers.
Okay, I second the motion, aye, thank you very much, it has been moved and seconded to approve the... Thank you very much, it has been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers for February 13th, 2024. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so three ayes, the vouchers have been approved. Okay, did you have anything?
Yes.
I sent that one sheet, but I probably haven't.
No, I don't have one sheet. Did you get a?
Do you have one sheet?
No, I think you, Joan, you didn't send it to us yet, because you only.
I don't have yet.
No, I don't have anything here either, here, Joan, no.
I don't have all the vouchers.
I just have.
That's okay, for the other ones, all right. Just, you can keep the whole pile until, until they get, yeah, let's just leave them somewhere over here and then give them to Joan at the end. Okay, while Joan is going off to do that, I am going to just quickly bring this up under resolutions and ordinances. We will have to be putting together a resolution. When I spoke with Brad, and Brad, you know, I'm assuming can hear me up here, Brad said, if we don't do an ordinance, we can do a resolution, and in the resolution, we refer to an ordinance that we've used in the past. So there has been, there was an ordinance among those documents that I forwarded to you, that spoke about the refuse. You know, it was passed, that, why we have these, why we have the service, and there is a fee charged in it, and whatever, so that we will be able to write a resolution and refer to that ordinance, you know, as in setting the new breakdown of the fees for refuse collection. So that will be something for us to work on, and I will ask, you know, for help as we're working on these. And then Sam was working on the refuse fee increase for 2024, so we're gonna, Sam, did you, you know, you sent that off to us, I don't know Samantha, if you had a chance.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. The refuse fee, so do you think that we'll go with that suggested, what had been suggested to us by?
I think it makes sense.
Okay.
Just like the, I did it again today, but I've done it in the past, just kind of figure out whether we work, what we collect, and what additional monies we need to collect for the administration aspect.
Right, okay.
Which includes postage and mailroom.
Okay.
We pay two salaries specific to the refuse effort. There's a portion of Joan Lambert's salary that goes to that.
Okay.
And Joan could work with Baker Philly, and can come up with a figure of 185.
Okay, so that.
That covers our contract costs and a figure that's rational and close to what our actual expenses are for.
Okay, fine.
Salary, postage.
Okay, so that we will have to, that will be a refuse fee increase, and we'll use those numbers from that. Then the additional that we do have to fill that shortfall is going to require its own resolution, I believe. Brad, are you there?
What do you mean by shortfall?
Well, isn't there like a, for past, you know, was there, yeah.
There's a shortfall that ended in December. And we sent out the bills for last year in December, but the shortfall is for '23. The new fees that you're putting in is for ones for '24, which we will be billing in June, end of May, first of June, in December, and that will cover the '24 fee.
Are you saying that the?
There's two different issues.
Well, can I ask a question to clarify? The bill that we received in December, is that for payment in arrears? More payment going forward for first half of 2024?
It's for the first half of 2024, but you're paying, what do I want to say, that it's been set up that it always carries over to the next year for payment?
Sure, if you pay in December, but it's for the first six months of 2024. Okay, so what happened in 2023, that's water under the bridge, right? I mean, we're not going to go back and bill people for what?
That's up to you.
The contract shortage was, I thought.
That was the issue, I thought that they contacted, they contacted the county.
For some reason, I thought that we were going to charge that, and that was going to be added, and notify people within that last bill that came out in December. But what about, okay, so I understand the balance that we're increasing is going to be added to that bill that comes out in May-June, okay, to cover the whole year, correct?
And that's on.
The total increase, which is amounts to $45 annually.
Right, okay.
That will be added to the.
To the June, yes.
2024.
All right, the May-June, okay, all right, and then.
Just to that one billing?
Correct.
Because.
So December billing.
The December billing went out with the standard fees that were.
No, I'm, December '24 billing.
That will get, that, well, then that billing is going to have to be made smaller, because the next two billings, no? It's going to stay the same?
What I'm saying is that in, when do you mail the second, for 2024, in June? Okay, so the June invoice to our residents will be a total of.
180.
180, which amounts to half of the lease fee, which is $65, and half of the refuse fee on a go-forward basis. So it's a total of $115. That's going to be for refuse, and the $65 for the lease collection.
And that will be for June?
That will be June.
And then you were saying that we should understand what the 2025 cost will be, so that December 2024 bill is accurate for the following year?
That is correct, because I'm pretty sure we have another bump in the contract price for 2025.
2024 just started, their contract just started.
Right.
Right, but if we're planning ahead for the billing, when does, what's the price increase for 2025?
I don't have that.
Okay, we should.
We have it, I have it somewhere.
Cool, we just want to plan for that in advance, yeah, okay. All right, so to be clear though, that we are dropping what we did not collect on time from last year, we're leaving that alone then, and not, and not adding that as a.
I thought that was the consensus, Brad, do you have recollection of what we?
I don't know if you, I don't know if you formally decided, the, I'm sorry if I cut out, the emails talked about it being like two separate items, which is why we talked about it being two separate resolutions. You definitely need, you should have a resolution setting the rate that you're talking about right now for '24.
Right.
Because the vesting ordinance simply says that the town council is creating the fund, and then has the authority to set the rate as needed, which is what we're doing. We're going to do it by resolution, so there's a paper trail, so five years from now, if somebody looks back, they can see why it's set that way. I don't recall that I was taking a vote of walking away from the shortfall.
Yeah, we did not.
I know there was, right, so that's, that's up to the council now, like, how you want to look at that.
I was pretty sure that we all decided, and I don't know if we had a formal vote on it, but.
No, well, we need a formal vote, you can't just.
No, I agree, we need a formal vote.
Okay. So then it becomes, do we leave this for the March to discuss, you want to talk about it right now, make a decision on it?
Well, if we split it into two resolutions, can we at least get the one for 2024 solid?
Well, yeah, we are, we're going to do the resolution for the 2024, absolutely, that's one of the things we'll work on, we'll get signed in for next month. Because we are, for Joan, before she sends out those particular things, we're not going to do it here, we have to get the document ready. And then, so that's what we'll do for that one, we know that. The shortfall fee, though, is a question that I know that we didn't do, make a final vote, and that we were discussing what was going to happen with that.
Sorry to interrupt, I think one of the things you were looking at too is how much of the shortfall was based on non-payment, and how much was it just, that wasn't billed enough, do you think those numbers sufficient, now, Sam?
No, there's no transparency to work with the collection situation is. I've several times not given, given that information. And honestly, I am pretty confident that we did talk about trying to go backwards, and there were comments from almost unanimous number of people on the board, that we would not attempt to go backwards, because you yourself, Dennis, questioned, how are we going to explain this?
Yes.
So.
Where, where this issue came up. Okay. Well, then, you know, we can wait until we have full board, you know, if we, to see if we're going to address it again, I don't want just this room, let's wait until Ralph is back, you know, and Rich is here, and then we can make, you know, a decision on that next month, yeah, and have a vote on that, so we're going to leave that shortfall table to next month. Okay, the resolution for the refuse fee increase, we will get ready for our next meeting, you know, to approve that, and under here is what Joan was asking for the defibrillator, for defibrillators, for the fire department, through our ARPA funds. So this needs a resolution, and we'll get that resolution done too, for the ARPA, the usage of the ARPA funds. Okay, so we will get those done now. Do I have any volunteers who want to work on the resolutions? I know I'll work on one, but.
Yeah, I'll do the resolution.
For which one?
For the refuse.
For the refuse, okay, that will be Sam, okay, and I can work on the one for, for this ARPA funds, unless you feel like.
Learning all the knowledge.
You'll pass, okay, all right, I'll take care of that, okay, and then we'll leave the next one. And, yeah, I know, I'll be getting mine. What we do is we do copy and paste, okay, so that works out well, you know, the Brad checks on for us, and we're good, all right.
Can I add to?
Please.
Sounds familiar with the bill, but you asked about the Robellini summary. As of January 10th, it was $19,595, does not include the billing that we have for February.
That were our.
Yeah, oh, you can add what?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, here we go. Okay, so let's move on to appointments to the boards and commissions and liaison positions. We know the park board is, there are a couple of candidates, so that still has to be determined. Park board is only meeting at the end of March, so we have time in March to make any kind of a determination on appointment. To fill Dolly Miller's position on the park board. Section B is liaison appointment, something I added today, thank you Brenda for reminding me about that. We need a liaison for fire and police. Sam is handling the building commissioner, code enforcement officer. Rich agreed to handle the road commissioner and be the liaison and have to talk to him, but I need a volunteer then for fire and police. And I don't have Ralph here to ask, and the only one I have is Samantha, so either we do that today, or we wait for Ralph to be back. Well, Samantha, we could do that then.
We will talk about that.
Okay.
And we need a park board liaison too.
Well, park board liaison, I have been doing, you know, before, but I don't need to keep it, that can go to somebody else too, so.
Maybe we can talk, if it's going to be the same night as it remains in the same before boosters, I could probably do that.
Okay, fine, if you'd like to do that, that's fine, we can go ahead and do that then, okay. So it may be that the park board liaison may, a liaison, but would be Samantha then, okay?
Yeah.
We, I don't know if they have any idea of changing anything, do you know if the boosters are planning to change dates?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, then it'll probably be the same date, okay. Samantha Arnold will now be the liaison for the park board. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to departmental reports, please, Chief Mark Swistek, please.
Good evening, everyone, for the month of January, Long Beach first progress filed to 176 calls for service when compared to 208 calls for service in the previous year for a decrease of 32 calls for service. During the month of January 13, incident reports were documented, total of six individuals were arrested. Two misdemeanor arrests related to traffic offenses for driving law suspended, and one arrest for reckless driving and also driving law suspended. Two misdemeanor arrests for operating one vehicle while intoxicated, one found in one arrest for battery from a tractor stunt. During the month, we experienced one week of bitter cold, and also another week of 30-plus inches of snow, which contributed to the overall decrease in officer-initiated activity due to the extreme weather conditions. During extreme weather conditions, we asked that our officers limit their officer-initiated activity when the roadways are very dangerous, therefore need to see one of our deputies when we harm out in the roadways. In the last two weeks, yesterday we hired a new deputy, Officer Deputy Matthew Disbro. We picked him up from the Port High Sheriff's Department, and he started with us in two weeks. Two weeks ago, we hired Deputy Matthew Vopat, who we picked up from the town of Westville. Both academy certified police officers, Deputy Vopat was in the town of Michigan Shores yesterday and today, working alongside me, getting familiar with the geography of streets, enjoying some traffic, radar control on the portal today. So I'll give them info meeting in the near future, so you can hope for the new deputies.
Thank you.
Aside from that, it was a lot along you.
All right, thank you, chief, any questions for the chief? No, thank you very much. Hi, Fire Chief, Yuri Bendis.
For the month of January, we spent 164 hours on everything calls. During the month, we had fire things, we got resurfaced by CPR, that's always a fun class to go through. We had a lot of calls for the month, two in Michigan Shores, both medical calls, overall power hot. And I just want to make a reminder that pancake breakfast is going to be May 5th.
Oh, that's good to know, yes. All right, thank you very much.
It's sort of on her.
Yes.
Her.
On the website.
Website.
Absolutely, awesome, okay, thank you. Any questions from you two, for fire? Will the costs be the same?
I'll do so.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, chief. All right, let us move on, building commissioner, code enforcement.
Deputy, I'm keeping up the report central, and we can have people as well. Very quiet in the permit area this month, based on, I was seeing several orders that, you know, you heard, they're still active. There are rumors of rebellion, the court did set aside the order that we had in November, and so now it's been set for trial. And, let's see, so, company, 361, Brenette is still working on that, and then with, um, about immediately, incomplete structure is there, still working with the woman, she really applied her, but she was not in the, for documentation, getting time to BZI to ask for variance, for defense, but we continue to work there. There was a, notices of abatement that we'd sent out last summer, so I did, oh, I did get an update on the roofing job at 3700 Brookdale Court, and that was done on Friday. So, this right, sorry, it was the day. It was only done Monday, right, yesterday, yes, it didn't happen. BZA met, and they reviewed two requests for special use grants, there were short-term rentals. One was rated with a stipulation that she would not advertise on any online platforms. And the other was continued because of a litigation that we were in, filed a home state exception on the property, it's like not living there. And so I did check that out, and he does not, it's a holdover, the county is slow in removing that from the time that he purchased the home. Let's see. However, yeah, so they did ask me to check on all the S2R properties, and the one that was filed with a home state exception, even though they don't live there, it's not a primary residence, so I reported that to the office, not to get you here. Next meeting is in March 28th. Oh, yeah, so I did, also we had that updated permit list for short-term rentals. There's a couple of expired rental houses sold, so that came off the list, we're going to move 15 now.
When the property in that one was sold, I know in the, in the ordinance, there is some ability for the new owner to go through the FCR, going through the full.
I think that was a renewed policy.
Yeah, the policy now is not, they have to apply for the whole thing.
Right, now they have to start, and they have to, have to, the house for six months before they resurface.
Very good, thanks.
So I am, you know, I was prepared on this form for renewal, but I had already thought of something else I need to put out and just to attach the current BZI certificate, so I need to change it again.
Okay, all right. So the ones that expired, they have to, we have to ask, they need to re, get them approved?
Yes, so, I mean, the ones that are expired, I haven't heard from them, I sent out the new ordinance, and told them, you know, that there were some changes specifically in the renewal process, but none of them have contacted me. So those will probably just, you know, go off the list, and then, you know, will use, will use the permit totally, they don't contact me.
Did we give a time period on that?
For.
For those, the renewal, do they have to, by when? For those, the renewal, do they have to, by when do they have to...
They have to start at more than 98 for expires.
Okay, all right, okay.
They all go over that, you know, and they don't, then they, they...
They lose that, okay.
I have a question on the conversation we had earlier this week, you got a call from Micro Verdict, it's about someone with S T R and not operating in that, it's an area that was not permitted, right?
Correct.
And we find that person...
Correct.
And now the house is up on the market.
Right, right, and he notified me because he's concerned that if you don't collect the spine, you may not be able to sell it. So I'm not sure what the status of that collections is, for its 311 on remodel, so I don't know what the status of that, that, you know, it's...
316, you have listed us, is it 316 remodel?
Uh, no, that's, that's one that actually, that is actually, this one has no permanent any, so it's not up there. But, yeah, so there's some urgency to that collections, which is several thousand dollars.
What urgency do I have? What urgency is that behind it?
Yeah, what's the...
I think that ought to come from the attorney, not from...
Yeah, let's, let's ask, but, Brad, are you, we have something, I don't know what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm following what you're saying there, so, right now, when you're sending citations out, they're going to the person or the owner. In order to attach them to the property, you've got to get, you've got to basically either convert it to a judgment, or put it as a lien on the property. The citation itself isn't going to show up on a third-party good-faith transaction as a lien.
How quickly could we move to, to do that? Is it going to take some long, long period of time?
No, no, I wouldn't, I would just need, and I'll talk with Deb, because I want to talk with her about a couple other matters.
Okay.
She has that information, as far as the citations are concerned, that we can run with that.
Okay.
So just a second, though, you have not gotten that sign that they were obligated, I don't even remember mentioning about, there's several clients in there, have you collected any things? I mean, has anybody said anything? Because I just never even know if it's a figure, huh?
Yeah, that's why it's better for you to follow on those instead of me. Well, we're seeing the town, but we have an ordinance that actually addresses the fact that the park treasurer's office goes through, and we are not authorized to collect, whereas you as a park treasurer are. I don't have anything to collect except send a little letter, and tell them they owe this much, and if they don't, then I turn it over to an attorney. Why do we have...
I have heard of that.
Okay.
I mean, we're losing a lot of time with that.
Here's, here's what the ordinance, 2021-10 says, under section 1, I, persons who failed to pay all fines imposed upon them within 30 days of the citation being issued will be included in a list of unpaid citation compiled by the park treasurer and presented monthly at the town council's regularly scheduled town council meeting. The list will be made available to the public inspection by the park treasurer's regularly kept office hours. It's in the ordinance, uh...
I know it's in the ordinance, but I'm asking that if it changed because it went a lot easier, why are we wasting a whole month? We may be wasting more than that, in the meantime, they said...
No, I don't disagree. I don't disagree that when these fines happen, we need to have some procedure where we're following them closely, and...
That's right, just something that's closely, that I don't have.
After 90 days of unpaid fines, we need to turn them over, whether it's for the leaf refuges, or for S T R fines, anything that is outstanding that should be paid. There should be a time limit, 90 days, 180 days, we need to have that, and there needs to be a tickler file where we put them in a calendar, you know, going back to, you know, demanding a filing.
Would you like to do that?
It's not my job, but I'll do it.
You want to do it, I'll classic turn it over to you. Well, we have to find out where our legality lies with this, because according, you know, because we have to make sure that we're not going against something the state recommends as to who should be collecting, you know, and stuff like this, we want to make sure that we don't go against that.
I'm just saying, you know...
Yeah, it's a great idea, somebody has to follow, yeah.
...involved, and I know we do a lot, you guys do a lot, you and I are very busy people, but this is important, because we, you know, like, I keep bringing up Mr. Rallis, who had to pay $2,000 to the town, and we're sitting here for how many years, having that fine growing, growing.
That, that is a completely different issue here. What I want to know is, how long do I have to wait before I turn it over to attorneys? We've turned, I don't know how many we've turned over to attorneys, I hope Brenda remembers or not, we've got other things to keep track of, that's not something like people...
Based on what, based on what Sam just read there, it sounds like you should just provide that report to the town council, then they can direct it to me when they choose to, whether it's, you know, something like this, that's more urgent, or something that's obviously growing and not paying, they just want to be kept the rest of Deb's issuing the fines, or these people paying, and then the town council can take the direction from there.
How long do you want me to wait before I turn it over?
I think a monthly report of what fines have been issued and what's not paid.
So if someone hasn't paid a refuge bill by the date we give them, we are supposed to be sending him a, a letter or something that's delinquent, right? And the council should know that we have so many delinquents, so you're not giving them any grace period afterwards, right?
No, I mean, you're just reporting it to the council, the council can determine what the grace period is afterwards, if you don't put the letter.
I agree, there needs to be a standard grace period.
Okay, you come up with what, we send out the bills on a certain date, tell them that they have to come up until certain...
They can't pay it.
So anybody that doesn't pay by that date, you want them turned over for collections.
Correct.
So then we've got to come back, and everyone that pays, we've got to come back in and say, so many people have paid it. Thank you.
But actually, what Brad, I think Brad's the point is, if we have a monthly report of unpaid fines or bills, and that is what we get from the, the town council receives that, and then as what you're saying, Brad, is the town council determines what action to be taken.
That's not what I'm asking.
So I'm saying, so I'm saying that...
What you're saying that if we have a deadline for someone to pay, say it's January, well, this is January, say, say February 15th is the deadline for paying their bill, if that's not paid, then in March, I have to show that these people are delinquent, but yet, we still get payments in that time period, but I'm still going to count those as delinquent? I don't follow that.
Well, if they have paid by the time, you have to make the report, you know, then obviously they're paid.
Then they're not delinquent.
They're not delinquent anymore, but, so that's not even an issue, the issue becomes those who have waited 30, 60, you know, whatever many days, which we have to determine, how many days do we wait?
Okay.
You know, for somebody to come through, so, anyway, okay. All right, that, that's something, we won't determine that right now, but that is something that we have to determine, but quickly, on this particular issue, with this...
On the procedure that we can talk and discuss, and see if it would be something that...
Okay, thank you, Sam. Brad, did you want to say something else?
Yeah, before we move on from Deb, if she's still there, I think...
Yes, she is.
On the S T Rs, the ones with the permits that have expired, are you monitoring them to see if they're still operating as S T Rs? I know you do a good job of that with some of the other properties.
Uh, yes, I just started that, so, yes, I, I am doing that.
That's just a second component of that, it's one thing if the permit expires, and we're going to put them on notice, it's another if the permit expires and they're continuing to operate as an S T R.
Well, do you want a public, we don't even have to call up the address, but in our roughly monthly emails, which we say, hey, this is going on, do we want to say, S T R updates, there are 15 active S T Rs in our town, there are some that have expired, if yours just expired, make sure you're going through the renewal process, or is it not worth it?
I mean, I, it's not on the email, but, you know, I, I told them that, you know...
Okay, it's not directly to them, it's a newsletter email, well...
Right, I mean, I'm not a video expert.
Okay.
I think especially because this is all relatively new, and you're just putting new procedures in place, doing something like that, you know.
Okay, all right, thanks, Brad. Thanks again, Deb. Okay, park board, Jean, any news?
Yes, I need the advice, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I need the advice of the council on a matter. We have, we have noticed that Leeds Park needs some tree maintenance. We have a lot of dead limbs over the volleyball court, we have a stand of the oaks that has, has a lot of dead branches in it, we have the oak tree that has a perpendicular branch that goes over birch wood, and it, it, if it goes down, it's going to take out a power line across birch wood. There are two large maples that are split and should be removed. We have contacted Maple City and Lazaro's Tree Service, which was a recommendation from a town council member that used that service and was very happy with it. And I also contacted Mick Wolf to give us a price, and the tree man, the tree man charges $100 to come out, so I did not employ him to come out. Mick Wolf did not want to do the work, so he did not want to furnish a proposal. And I think that Sam brought in the estimates for this work, one estimate was $4,800 and one was $5,000. And I wanted to ask the town council's advice, this is a pretty hefty sum for this work, and as a park board, we do not really see our budget, we don't see what we have to work with. And I wanted to know if the town council would recommend this as a, a town expense through the park, the park allocation, or would you want the park board to go to the booster club for funding on this? So I wanted to get the council's advice on this. And I also wanted to say that last year, we approved, as a park board, we approved Mick Wolf to regrade the old nature trail and put down washed gravel, that was approved, but we are approving our expenses with the caveat that we, that the money is there and approved by the park treasurer, because, like I said, we do not really see the amounts in the park board allocation, so I wanted you to know as a council and a, and a town that hopefully next year, we will be able to regrade and put gravel down on the old nature trail, and I wanted your advice on the matter of Leeds Park, so...
Didn't we approve the gravel?
The gravel, that was a park board.
From Mick Wolf.
That was approved at the park board, that was approved, but it's awaiting, is awaiting action.
It just, yeah, okay.
But I want guys on the trees in Leeds Park and where that money should come, park board, is it a priority with town to do that work?
I think it's a priority, because it's a safety issue.
Well, yeah, if people are using the park...
It's a public park.
Right.
Even though there's not a lot of people that go there, it is a designated park.
Right.
Tree, or tree shelter.
That would be, that would be an issue in a public area. Did you want to say something, because I was going to ask the question?
I think it's definitely a town expense. The charter for the park board is to maintain the existing parks, right, and to enhance them and improve them, so I believe that this is something the town should...
Okay. Joan, can you, do you...
I believe if you look at your budget, there is money in the, for the tree removal of the park, the streets, a tree removal.
Yes, and about the budget.
But specifically for the park, for that park then, do we know if there's money that's available through the park board, specifically?
I don't have that.
We know going forward, we have to ask for that as we do the budget, but, you know...
That's correct, what I'm saying is money could already be in there underneath, I can't remember which fund it's under, but we put it in there every year for trees.
Okay, so we need to look...
Tree removal and ask with the park...
So we need to check the budget that we put together last year?
A budget that was put together last year, and tell us what money's available.
All right, okay.
Know how much has been spent in the park, in that...
And I can, I wish you would ask me these questions before we come to a council meeting.
Well, this is...
Give you some answers.
This is where the question came up, though, so it couldn't come earlier, so this is why the question was brought to us.
I understand that, but ask us other things.
Okay, thank you, all right, thank you, Joan, on that information then, well, we will need to look into that, so you could share that info, and Jean could take a look at that. So Jean, let's take a look at that and figure out how much money there is, okay? If there is something available in there, of course, we'll have to check.
The park board president get a copy of the budget for the park?
Uh, the budget is open for the entire public, the copies are distributed to the town council members, actual paper copies, but the, everything, it's on Gateway, everybody can access our town budget via the state site. Okay, and I think we have a link on the website for Gateway, we do not?
We do not, I did not know what it was, but I will add it.
Okay, we have, I think there was on that, you know, when we did our original, you know, website, that there were links to state, so check that out, that we should have a link for Gateway. Okay?
Can I have the opinions of the other council members on whether they think this is a priority for the town to have those trees worked on?
Oh, we agree, I agree that it, they should be worked on.
Yep.
Samantha said yes.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jean. Okay, road commissioner, Bob Skalkowski.
For the month of January, there was 40 hours worth, I mean, 26 of them had to do it in the storm, all the rest of that, you know, the snow and water, so...
Okay, all right, thank you.
I want to...
Did you say 40 or 140?
Yeah, 40.
It was a big, rotten show.
I want to compliment all for...
Yes.
For their work on the Stone River, I know, I heard from one individual complaining, but when you have 30-some inches fall in the span of a day and a half...
Oh, my gosh.
To get the drive, to get any cars out of the neighborhood, it's a miracle.
I know, it was, it was great, thank you.
It didn't come down Mike Street, it was sad. Plus, you weren't supposed to be out driving, you can make customs for work, for emergency purposes.
That's right, yeah. But maybe somebody just felt like they needed better service than others, so, who knows?
Okay, we're, we're close to, it's not...
So, okay, we don't have anything from the advisory plan commission, as Isaac is not here right now, so we will hear from him next time. B Z A, I guess, Deb gave us a report basically on B Z A, so of course, Matt is not here today. White ditch drainage board, there was nothing regarding Michigan Shores, which is wonderful, and if you haven't taken a look yet, take a look eastward from El Portal towards the Michigan State Line, and you'll see that the cleaning that they did back in, I believe it was in December, you know, was very good, very nice, so it's nice and clean, the banks and nothing hanging over, so that was done very well, and we will have to consider doing something with regards to ours, you know, our end, the one that we're responsible still for, which is west of El Portal. Okay, Samantha, website, any news, any reports?
No, I, I was putting together a report, so I'll bring you guys a traffic report for the website coming up.
Okay, cool, thank you. NERC, there is nothing newer to report right now, I will be attending a meeting on Thursday, so I will let you know next month to see what, what else comes up, on, on NERC. Okay, we have unfinished business from before, and one of that is the Indiana Office of Technology email address and domain change, Samantha, can you give a little update?
Of course. Um, we, Samantha and I set up accounts to kick off, kick off the process, you have to have an account with the state's online portal, and that's where you submit your request, and we got as far as getting our account set up, and then the whole process inside for submitting your request to have them host it was down, which is ironic, so we could not finish the process, and they also said it, it was down, and then they also had said it was going to kick off in 2024, and it hadn't started. Since that time, the last week, it looks like everything has kicked off, so we're going to go... So we're going to go back, submit our requests, um, to make this move, excuse me. But in order to do that, we do need a couple of things. We need, um, I had a discussion about the number of emails.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, that will affect the costs. And I, I had estimated a lower number of emails than you were suggesting, and that was to increase the cost. And now the town council needs to decide here on the number.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, that will increase the cost. And then, um, I need to regroup with the, with the hosting of the current domain with Ray, um, to get that admin access. Because as soon as we make our request, we're going to go to do the switch over, so I have to have all the pieces in place. But we're ready to go, we've got, um, there were some, um, things to set up. And once we get that request in and they come back and say, here's next steps, we will regroup with Sam and me and Joan to kind of go through the process.
Okay, sounds good, all right, very good.
Um, so do you want to, do we need to discuss emails now?
No, we could discuss it right now. I, you know, we had, uh, the list that you provided, so, you know, for the town council members, you know, and then of course, uh.
So if we go through the entire list that you provided, which is town council, Deb, Bob, um, board president, vice presidents, all the board members and secretaries, that will give us, that will go about, about two grand a year.
Wow, for the emails, really?
Yes, it, it gives you Google, basically Google Workspace.
Mm-hmm.
So it's email chat.
Okay.
And terabyte data storage, um, all that security, all that kind of stuff. Um, the hosting fees will stay the same because it, it gives you a domain, but you still have to pay your, your, um, domain, uh, name ownership or. That, that doesn't change, that's minor. Um, so twelve users, which is like town council, um, Deb, Bob, um.
How do you get twelve?
Presidents.
Joan.
Bo, Bo, Joan and Redna.
Okay, so we've got.
Board presidents, that's like twelve, that's around eight hundred dollars a year.
Okay, and if you add in, well, you know what, the, like for instance, Linda Stowicki works as a secretary for BZA, so for her it would probably be valuable, you know, to be on, as well as whoever would be the.
APC.
Yes, for that. So that would probably be very worthwhile, at least in the past. You know, it was, you know, all the bulk of the work came through, you know, that one person who was doing things and then sending reports out.
Yeah, that would probably bring it up to about a grand.
Okay, all right.
I have those spread in that spreadsheet.
Mm-hmm, right, okay.
Click and check and those are the costs.
Well, then the others can either have information shared with, um, you know, for their presidents, I guess. You know, like for the BZA and Plant Commission, whatever. But I, I think that those who are working with them hand in hand with regards to that.
Now, as we move to this and we have all of our emails into one sort, and we, and I think we can talk about also using Google Drive as document storage and, and everything else and having a cloud. It might also alleviate some of the other IT costs that we have. Not the internet, we obviously want the hosting, the internet access, but some of the other charges might go away because we'll have all our documents, but we'd have to go through a process of moving everything too.
Yeah.
That's a whole other discussion. But it's something I think about as having a more centralized, um.
Oh, absolutely. Totally sounds. Okay, all right, so, uh, let's take a look at that doing. I mean, what do you think, Sam?
I, uh, I struggled with some of the other groups within the crowd that never, a lot of people don't ever show up to town council meetings and I have, you know, this limited interaction between them and the rest of people that, that's the town council.
But like eliminating the other additional members of those, the BZA and the, and the Plant Commission. Okay, so we said we could eliminate them, except for the president and the secretary, you know, that's doing the paperwork, you know, all the time, so.
But you're, you're saying you're not sure the president and the secretary is going to work for us?
No, I, I guess, I mean.
Well, even if they don't come to the town council meetings, they're doing other work on the outside. And we don't all go to their meetings either to listen to what's going on there, so we can't negate that they have something to do.
Okay.
So, and then if it works out that way where we can alleviate some of Joan's extra work, then, uh, you know, maybe the BZ will, secretary can take on more of the responsibilities or something making it easier for Joan, um, you know, to get some stuff done in the future, so. Anyway, okay.
Okay. All right, I will, um, I will send you an updated estimate on costs based on this. But my math, I don't do math quickly in my head, but I think it'll be around a grand.
Okay.
It takes, and once we kick it off, it's about a thirty day process, so. We'll get, we have those, um, I'll check in with domain owner, get that cleared, and then we can start the process.
Sounds good, all right.
And this is, this is to change our domain so that we would become townofmichianashores.gov instead of dot org. And then all email addresses would also be in that domain, that's kind of the goal. And then the email addresses would be the equivalent of if you have Gmail now, it's, they have Google Workspaces for, for municipalities, for businesses, it's that kind of thing. And then you have administrator that you control, so you kind of control all your users, have some security insight into documentation, emails if someone leaves and things like that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, uh, one of the other things that we've been discussing now is the removal of tree debris from town properties. Sam, you want to take that, that one stuff?
Uh, yeah, I was here, you guys can.
Yeah, I saw that.
Probably seen it, like, turn it off.
Yes.
Out of the ten properties that were, should be, um, last summer, I believe.
Joan, did you, you asked this?
With Ida, Ida, uh, Bob Skalkowski, uh, identified ten areas, um, that were in need of some debris removal close to the road. Overhanging trees over the road, trees that are dead, that could, could fall over the road. Um, it turns out in matching those locations up to the list that we obtained from Port County that identified the town, town roof properties, clearly on that map, if you don't have a map, if we did not give you a map, we can provide you with one. We got several copies from the town, or from the county. Seven of the ten were identified as being on private property. Uh, the three that remain, um, are still on the list. Um, and I believe we should reengage with the tree services that we, that we want to. Maple City had provided a proposal on all ten. So we'll go back to Maple City and, uh, other tree services to get bids on the three. I know there was a lot of discussion going on, emails about, um, whether or not it's our duty to remove trees on our private property if it's in an easement. And I believe, uh, the answer is no, that the, so it's explained by Brad, uh, is that an easement allows approved entities, whether it be the, the town, the firefighters, the, um, surveyors.
Utilities.
Utility companies to enter into your property, but it's still the homeowner's property. So that being said, uh, any trees, we've had a complaint from Sheila Carlson about a tree, either bordering her property or on the line, uh, that the town should remove it. I don't believe that we have any liability to do so, I don't think that's this discussion. So the ultimate bottom line is we'll, we'll go to work on trying to clean up. There are tree, trees on Brookside, uh, standing trees that are dead that need to be removed, they're going to fall at some point. And, uh, they're right up along the roadside, so one of them is very large, so. If you have not been by, uh, and if you want to have input on, on that, uh, please feel free to do so. I'm going to call for bids starting next week and, uh, see if they can't come up and get it cleaned up before spring.
Okay, thank you very much, Sam. Okay, and with regards to the other properties, all the, where, um, of the debris is left on the side, and I see there are piles of debris that are beginning to, you know, be piled up by various owners right there. They're putting it out in towards the, um, the right of way. Well, when our leaf service comes through, the leaf service picks up small sticks and twigs, not, uh, tree trimming, you know, debris, not bush coming, cutting debris. Uh, those are things that you handle on your own. And I think that we, I know that we're going to send out a letter to all the property owners in the town to remind them that they are responsible for maintaining the vegetation that is on their properties up to the edges of the roadways. So that would include bushes, plants, trees, flowers, you know, whatever that is. We have homeowners who have allowed bushes to grow extra, out, in towards the street, so much so that if you're going by, your car, if you're, if you're passing out of the car, your car is literally brushing up against, you know, the bushes as you go by. So that is not good for your car, obviously. And if, uh, especially by the corners, it's extremely dangerous because people can't see what's around the corner when they come by. So we will be asking all residents to make sure that they are, you know, maintaining and cutting back on these bushes and even removing them if that needs to be done, especially in areas that are not safe. The letter we send out will also show a little diagram, especially for the corners of exactly where, how far, you know, some of the trimming should take place. Um, and as well, um, any kind of trees that are in those areas or have low hanging branches should not be hitting the windshields of, you know, trucks that go by and so forth, so. So we will ask everybody to make sure that they're maintaining their own particular property. Um, and for the, you know, for the beauty of the town and for even the safety of everybody, you know, who's in the town. Uh, so that will go out, you know, if you're, in the next month or two, you know, we're going to make sure that that gets out to everybody, so everybody knows. Um, okay.
I want to, on this subject, I would like to re-bring up the idea that we were, we had an approval to purchase some equipment for the road commissioner.
Yes.
A flail mower, a gravel hook that will, I think, if you drive through the streets, as you just mentioned, there's low, low hanging branches where Bob can get up to, what, fourteen feet? Eighteen feet. Eighteen feet up. It, uh, and, uh, we can, uh, use that equipment to, to do a lot of different things. Uh, when trees do fall over the road, Bob's going to have that equipment to be able to move, uh, pieces of large limbs that fall that are going to be moved further off the road than what they are now. And I think it's important that we, when we do move them, if they, the tree fell from a private property, we put it as much as we can back on the private property.
Yes.
And I know Chief Swistec also forwarded, um, the, uh, Long Beach tree ordinance. I've, uh, read through a portion of it, it's, uh, pretty in-depth and very comprehensive. And, uh, it was discussed at the, uh, Advisory Plan Commission to review it and to get together in March, at the March meeting and to determine whether or not we want to recommend that the town pass an ordinance that made it to tree, everything related to trees.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, any questions? No, for Sam, no, okay. Then let's move on to new business. Uh, A, uh, Police Chief Swistec had mentioned a radar speed sign that was being installed in Long Beach, and there was some correspondence together. I thought that was a great idea, and I wondered about it our time, but Sam is the one who reached out to Chief Swistec to ask about that. And, um, and Sam, I don't know, I, I believe you said that you're going to try to work on it or no?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's worth, uh.
Oh, absolutely.
To try to, try to tap into that.
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent, that's an excellent thought. Um, we do have, you know, I have, uh, homeowners who have approached me, uh, and actually some of them spoke with me at the Christmas Holiday Lights, um, celebration. And they talked about how fast cars speed up on, um, Oakdale. And we know that, you know, we put up those, you know, the, the aprags to see how fast they're going and so forth. Well, you know, when they know that the, the machine is there, you know, they're already slowing down, especially one way or the other, the God's going to get me and they're going to slow down. But I've had parents, and they were parents of children, you know, who either walk or are on bicycles that are going to. And they said it's really scary, especially in that area, they start speeding up right past the park somehow, you know, they get their speed going as they're moving.
So. Portola towards the beach.
Towards the beach or leaving town, leaving town, all kinds of, uh, I would imagine many of them are contractors who are leaving, you know, to get home. Okay, time to go home, and they're flying. And then otherwise it's just people and homeowners, all kinds of people are speeding down that road. And we brought this up before, and I know we discussed at one time, speed bumps, but speed bumps get in the way of plows and, and maybe other things. But is there any chance that we can put in stop signs to make people slow down because they're moving too fast? So, yes, or you're shaking your head and saying?
No, you can't control speed by stopping, or by stop signs. From what I understand, they walk. Is that right?
Well, okay, now by the park, I would imagine it would be an issue of safety for anybody coming to the park, that they could cross the road to go from one side to the other side without being hit by a car. So that, again, would not be speed, but that would be safety. But you know.
Put it acrosswalk?
Wouldn't you look at what we got for signings out for now and road commissioners? For pedestrian crossing?
You know, something around there, because the, the, the biggest complaint, I mean, there are people who complain that they're flying fast down El Portal. You know, as a matter of fact, I happen, I've been with someone who, she went right through the light today, and I was like, not the light, the stop sign, it was like, ooh, nobody wrong. But anyway, people do start to put a little speed on there. And it wasn't me, my friend was riding, anyway. Uh, but on, uh, on Oakdale, I do get comments from residents who are concerned because they're going to play paddle ball, they're going to play tennis, and they're bringing children to the park. And sometimes, you know, if you're anybody who has small children, know how they dawdle, or you say, stay by the side of the road, and before you know it, they're like, phew, like this. You know, the cars are moving fast, you know, so we are thankful, grateful that nothing has happened so far. But because a number of people have approached me about that, I figured we need to bring this up again. So thanks, I know I heard that too as well, that stop signs are not for speed, but maybe for the safety of being, people being able to go to the park. So maybe from one end of the park and then on the other end of the park going the other way, so that, you know, at least people are getting into the park are safe.
Do we have to?
Okay.
Okay, awesome, thank you, that would be good. Okay, thank you very much. You have a question or a comment?
I was going to say, do we have to request for stop signs, they go to the state or county to request stop signs?
No, he's, he's a pretty old town government, but there's a uniform traffic code.
Okay.
Manual that you use that will assist you in placing them at, you know, uh, locations and distances and lots based on also, you know, accident damage and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Obviously you don't have that, you have the speeding concerns. You just, as Chief Bednick said, you just can't do stop signs to control speed. Um, otherwise that neighborhood's have, you know, they're very fire and blunt.
Well, Michigan City has them on every corner, you know. I use my brakes.
To Sam's point on the radar sign, um, Sam, I did communicate about that. I was, I'm your town letterhead, drafted a letter to the Port County Prosecutor, Attorney Sean Fagan. I've already talked to him, uh, the fact that you're interested in placing one on El Portal. Um, he said once he gets the letter that he will consider it and that he'll come back.
Awesome, that's great, okay.
He didn't give any answers, he was like, said, I'm going to give him the letter. I did have a discussion with Phil Hine, I think he was going to be involved.
Do you have a copy of a letter that Long Beach used, maybe? We can do a little cut and paste.
I actually just did it through email.
Oh, okay, yeah, we got it, cool, all right, good, okay. Very good, thank you very much, okay. Uh, then, we already addressed the letters to residents, I mentioned that in the other, you know, discussion, so we can pass. Our renewal of leaf removal contract, that's going to be coming up this year. Uh, our contract is going to finish with them, they've been a very good service for us. You know, that we've used so far, Signage Lons, and, uh, Jason has been really good to work with and so forth. But because this is a big contract, we have to put them out for bids. So it won't be enough for us to just try to renew the same one with him. We will have to do, you know, put it out for bids. Now, yeah, the fact that we are very happy with the kind of work he's done, you know, may help us choose him going forward regardless of the kind of bids that come back, but we do have to put it out for bids, so we should probably get at least two, maybe three. Uh, Michael Martinez had a list, uh, because he handled that in the past. And maybe that might be something Samantha, you might be able to work on, to do that. He's, Michael's got some information that he used, you know, how he presented all of that, and maybe he can walk you through it and give you the info he had.
Okay.
So, and I'll introduce you to Jason. This is, um, our next cleanup is going to be in April, I believe.
April, May?
But it's, basically the contract ends as of, I think, May first is what it is, as of the spring cleanup. So then we will need to redo.
Do this summer so we have it ready for the fall?
Yes, exactly, and we want. Yes, exactly. We want to get it done earlier, in other words, so that we don't do it just like, we have to get those letters out, because we need to let people know when other cleanups are going to be.
Okay.
So that we would make a decision of some kind in the summer.
Okay.
Would be very good, okay? All right, so thank you very much, I'm going to put that down with Samantha, okay? All right. Brad, anything for us as attorney reports?
Just a brief, quick update, after coming out of the executive session, there were two pieces of litigation that we're going to move forward on. Those are very near defiling, in fact, after a quick phone call with Deb. Hopefully, I can communicate with her this week, those will be moved.
Okay.
I will, so guys, we updated as I goes along, one of those is on an ongoing SDR violation, the other is on the move of a structure that Deb hinted up on in her report.
Okay, thank you very much. Awesome, good. And then, let's move on to miscellaneous business. Deb, did anything, were you able to get out that whole harmless agreement from 501L portal? We had brought that up, I forgot to ask you.
I believe I sent that to Deb. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll have to.
Okay, follow up on that, because.
I can't remember if they sent it back.
Okay, all right. And then let's make sure that, you know, Joan also has it further piled then. Okay, now, oh, we are, I've been the acting, I was the secretary for the Advisory Plan Commission, but when I became the president of town, I couldn't hold, you know, an official like position, whatever, with the advisory plan, at least not as a secretary or a paid secretary. So I just helped them out as an acting secretary, you know. However, the position does pay a small stipend, so, which I cannot collect, but somebody else can. So in case there's somebody interested out there who would like to be the Advisory Plan Commission Secretary, they meet once a month, and there are various, you know, other duties that have to be done, but let's keep that in mind, and if you're interested, please contact us. You know, all our contact information is on the newsletters you get and on the website. So, you know, reach out in case you are interested in helping out. Once a month only, first Tuesday of the month. Okay? And then there is, I will provide you with a list of the, you know, that you were asking me about John description and so forth, you know, so that maybe we'll post that out on our website too. Okay, so that's two things there. And I have, I did add something here, I'm going to bring it up to right now, into the miscellaneous, you know, business. And my question is this, we have been this year being a lot stricter with regards to making sure that if people are asking for permits to do work and so forth, that they make sure that they have paid any outstanding fines to the town. Because there are people who have outstanding fines for leaves, for refuse pickup, or we're probably, Spofflaws earlier about water, but we could never do anything about that. So we have been enforcing that, and people have been paying their fines when they wanted to come to, you know, and get a permit to do work. Now, what do we do if we have a contractor who lives here in town and has outstanding fines? Can we actually hire that person and pay them to do work if we do not allow people to have worked on other homes if they have outstanding fines? I mean, it's a question that I think is a.
It, you know, it seems logical to me that we would apply the same rationale that we do to homeowners, that if they want to get a permit or what have you, that they have to be up to date. I think it's a good policy to have for residents, and it should, if a contractor, whether they live in the town or not, owes the town money, they absolutely should be required to pay.
Oh, that makes sense too, yeah, in case they owe it for some reason.
I mean, it's unlikely that they would, if they didn't live in the city or the town. But, yeah.
I mean, we go after it, make sure that people get going permits and everything is done, you know, the right way.
So this is a contractor, someone who lives in Michiana Shores, their business is a contractor, and then they are going to do contract work for someone else, and you're saying if they have fines to.
No, or for the town, I'm not even worried about somebody else.
Oh, we're going to hire them for the town.
That would be hard, but if we're hiring them for the town, you know, can we act, should we actually be doing that? I mean, is that, if we have a different set of, it's sort of like a different set of rules for different people. So that if we have, if we require that homeowners here pay fines in order to get permits to do something, can we hire somebody here in town who has outstanding fines due to the town?
I think we should incorporate it into any type of contractor vendor process that we follow. I know that Joan wanted us to have the contractor sign a limitation of liability, which we got from Maple City on that, proof of insurance. It should also check off the box that they don't owe any money.
I mean, I like the idea of trying to do that, I just wanted to find out what anybody else thought, so. Okay?
I think that's, it's a contractor checklist is a good idea, yeah.
We, I created like a draft document for us to use, we've pretty got bids, but we've never formally put it into play.
Will you share that with me?
Thank you. Yeah, if you've got them, that would be really good, and then maybe we can take a vote on it next month, you know, and then put it into place. Okay. All right. Thank you, since you said you already have some kind of document. All right, thank you very much. And Brad, you want to pitch, you know, say anything about that, or thoughts on that?
No, I think it's something as far as permitting the contractors to work in the town, certainly something that you could have them verify that they don't have any outstanding fines or fees. I think it's more relevant if it's a fine issue where they've done something unpermitted or done something that would affect their actual ability to perform the work in the town. I think you run a little far afield if they've got a, you know, a leaf cleanup fine that they haven't paid on their own house. So in fact, the town hiring them might be an opportunity to pay for that service. Well, just something to think about.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, good. Okay, any communications received by the town? Did anybody else here get anything? Joan, any communications?
Everything I need, I have.
Okay, all right, thank you. Public comments?
I just got one to ask Deb. Do you know of the SDRs, are the people locking their doors to the furnishings?
I don't know.
We had a call the most night of the year over in Michiana, Michiana. They had a gas, gas wreck party going on. They smelled gas when they went into this one room. We had called, we checked the room, but the room off of that was their furniture and their water and stuff. They had locked, a push button lock, they couldn't get us into that room. Not that it was off the floor, not that much, so we could kind of smell the door, we found nothing. But if it was me, I wasn't, I wasn't jurisdictional over there, we went to the hall. I busted the door down, just checked. And so they're going to be liable if we busted the door down because they got locked and there's no way to get into that room.
Wow, that makes.
But they did have a gas leak.
Yeah.
Doors opened up.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you, that is a very good point. Yeah, with regards to the actual permits and the rules and stuff like that, and all the, that is really good. Well, we're Deb.
Because we had four calls within a matter of four days, gases.
Okay.
And we couldn't find any of that one. There was two other ones, one, you smell outside a house.
Wow.
And we sat there about two hours waiting for the gas company. So, I can't remember who it is, it's a mission.
Oh.
But we, it sure smelled big time.
Wow.
So, but we got to get in that room, guess what, it's going to come out.
Oh, wow, okay, that is a very good point, thank you so much for bringing that up. Okay, locked rooms, okay. Locked mechanical rooms, okay. Okay, council comments?
No.
Nope. Okay. All right, I'm going to say again, welcome Samantha, okay? I know you've already given, you know, your, we all gave them last month, but anyway, so, welcome. So, other than that, thank you everybody else for all the reports and everything you've done, for all the work you do here anyway, and we'll see you next month. Motion to adjourn?
A motion that we adjourned?
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okeydoke.